Meryl.
President.
Mr. Steigel.
President.
Mr. Ball.
President.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
Mr. Berquist.
Here.
Mr. Arcury.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
The vice presidential legion. The legion to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item under reorganization is election of chairman.
Mr. Chairman, before we vote this evening, I want to commend both you and Mrs. Merrill for your service during 2020. Obviously, it was an unusual year. Couldn't have been easy to lead this council through a pandemic. And Mrs. Merrill obviously taking it upon herself to come in here every week at the risk of her own health to look at the bills and make sure everything was done properly. So you both deserve commendation for that. And given the fact that we are still in the pandemic, I personally think that we should just maintain the status quo for another year. So I'm going to nominate Mr. Ball for chairman.
Second.
Let me know, Mrs. Merrill.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, I move the nominations be closed.
Second.
Second.
Let's hear the question of closing the nominations in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay. Just a little roll call.
So what council members will be doing indicating who they would like to see as chairman? Mrs. Merrill?
Myself.
Mr. Lewis?
Mr. Ball.
Mr. Steigel? Mr. Arcury? Mrs. Merrill. Mr. Ball?
Mr. Ball.
Mr. Berquist?
Mr. Ball.
Mr. Cozer.
Mrs. Mr. Ball.
I would like to add one thing. I think Tip O'Neill once said, "All politics are local." And to that degree, Mr. Ball and I agree on most of our local issues. I just want to make clear, I don't agree with his position on some of the more national type, especially the results of the latest election.
Okay, everybody's entitled to their opinion on that one. Okay, election of the vice chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Mrs. Merrill for vice chairman.
Second.
The nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I move the nominations be closed.
Second.
Vote on the nominations to be closed. In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, there being one nomination in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next item is the appointment of the Personnel Appeals Committee. Same group on there for a period of time. Mrs. Merrill, would you like to continue?
I would like to request for appointment.
What? Do you like to continue? Did you say you?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I can't hear what she's he said.
Yeah. And I think that it would be a good time to have a couple of different people. So I would, Mr. Berquist and Mr. Cozer like to?
That's fine.
I'll do that.
That's fine.
All right. So that would be Mr. Berquist, Mr. Cozer, and Mrs. Merrill on the Personnel Appeals Committee. Jacob, representatives, this is the crowning jewel of all of us.
Could I take it again?
Okay.
I'll take the backup if no one wants it.
All right, so Mr. Berquist and Mr. Cozer is the backup.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, didn't hear anybody running to take it.
If anyone else wants it.
Okay.
Brian?
Thank you.
I got too much.
The appointments of professional consultants, appointment of the solicitor.
I move that we appoint John Smith.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. James Smith is our solicitor. Chairman of the Township Consulting Engineer.
Will you ever interview anyone?
Second.
Discussion in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay.
Is Scott ever been here this year?
Yes. I mean, he's not here frequently, but that's not what we deal with on a normal basis.
I don't think he's been at a meeting. Is that what you meant?
That's what I meant here, yeah.
Oh, no, not here. It is not.
All right, I'm sorry.
And again, the reason why you would not see Scott is that the township's engineer is actually marks a midas. And there are consulting engineer that are strictly looking at residential or commercial development. So you would expect to see them at the planning commission.
And we recognize the services of our township engineer. Thank you.
The appointment of the Township Elder at Consulting Engineer.
I move Lennon Smith Solar and Engineering.
Aye. Discussion in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay. Appointment of the Township Traffic Engineer.
Move we reappoint traffic planning at Zine Inc.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, this will be professional consultants. Now we'll move to boards and authorities. First board is the Cable TV Board.
So there are two terms that are expiring, one for Ms. Solkowski, the other one is for Mr. Swinecock. They both have indicated that they're interested in continuing to serve.
Is there a reason Adam was only able to attend three out of the eight meetings?
I do not have the answer to that question.
Well, who's the school district representative? Perhaps he was tied up with the planning for the high school?
I would.
Move we reappoint Dr. Solkowski and Adam Swinchuck. Second.
Discussion in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, Destruction Appeals Board.
This is our board that doesn't sell them in favor of means. Mr. Phelan is asked to be reappointed to the board.
So moved.
Second.
Let us hear everyone has 100% attendance.
After zero meetings.
None of them did. All right, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay. Environmental Quality Board.
There are two members whose terms expired this year, Mr. Johnsonbaugh and Ms. Rosenfelder. Both are asking to be reappointed.
I'll move to reappoint Mr. Johnsonbaugh and Ms. Rosenfelder to another four-year term.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, but this is a board that does have a student representative, and we're still struggling with being able to fill those positions. So.
We still have one. The other one was too, right?
Right. But schools been so messed up, I think it's made it difficult to find someone.
We get that back because we've had some really good students involved with that. Traffic Impact Fee Advisory Committee.
Mr. Doleant's term is up. He is seeking reappointment for the traffic impact fee.
So moved.
Second. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed. The Parks and Recreation.
Library.
Library Board. And on the library board, there's no need to take any action because you filled that position in December.
Less meeting.
Oh, okay.
So the Park Board. Park Board, yeah. So there are two positions whose terms are expiring, Mr. Earhart and Mr. Reppey. Mr. Reppey is the school district appointee. They have yet to be in a position to make a recommendation for someone to fill that position. So Mr. Earhart.
I'll move that we reappoint Mr. Earhart to the Parks and Rec Board. Second.
Move the second in favor?
Aye.
Can I ask a question, though? If he's also a school district appointee, do we need to wait for them to agree to reappoint?
I don't think he is.
He's not in. He resigned, and so he's not.
No, Mr. Earhart. I thought you said.
You have asterisks on him.
No, what I'm saying is, Mr. Earhart, you do not have to wait for. But Mr. Reppey, you do.
Okay, just clarifying.
Yeah.
Oh, I see. Was Mr. Earhart a school board, a school district representative?
I believe he is, but the school district knows that term is up and hasn't asked to do something different with Mr. Earhart.
Then can we just say conditional when then if something happens?
Okay, Peters Creek Sanitary.
There are no positions.
No positions are open.
Open.
Peters Township Sanitary.
Move we reappoint Coach Banazak.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Bank.
There are no board members up on the plane.
Open there. Youth Commission.
There are three positions that are up on the Youth Commission, Mr. Barnes, Mr. Tornavain, and Mr. McGrath. They are all asking for reappointment.
I'll move to reappoint the three gentlemen, Mr. Barnes, Mr. Tornavain, and Mr. McGrath, to another term.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay. Zone Hearing Board.
There are two board members whose terms are expiring, Mr. Milford and Mr. Higgins. They are both asking to be reappointed.
So moved. Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, that concludes the boards and authorities. Now miscellaneous.
I would like to make a comment, just go quick on Peters Township Council attendance. I mean, I think out of all of us, we've all missed like five meetings, which considering the pandemic is pretty impressive. So kudos to everybody.
Good point. I added up the total number of meetings. I forget how many there are.
Actually, I think I only missed one. Who added these up?
It could be the famous.
You sure? I think the only one I missed was the one I was sick and I called Paul.
Yeah.
You can check. Maybe I missed another one. Doesn't matter.
Appreciate everybody's.
Hey, you want the gold star?
Good work, Ryan. So.
Last year I was 36.
Everybody gives a.
I was out once for COVID.
Okay, the miscellaneous reorganization, the official newspaper of the township.
We're recommending that the observatory board.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, in favor?
Aye.
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 Establishing the dates and time of the regular council meetings for 2021.
Move we continue to meet on the second and fourth Mondays and the third Monday in December instead of the 20th instead of the 27th.
Second.
So Memorial Day this year doesn't fall?
31st.
None of them.
So we're.
There's five Mondays in May.
We have long holidays all the time.
Perfect. That's another one I always miss.
Good year for that.
That's why you got the COVID. One out of state.
Renewal of municipal lanes.
Just the.
We didn't vote.
Time. I need a vote on that.
Oh, I thought we did. Okay, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Municipal lanes.
There's no action required. One of the things that Ryan did provide for you tonight is a list of the outstanding liens for garbage collection. Those are, the face value of those is actually declined from last year by $10,000. We continue to make efforts to collect on those liens. I think George's done a good job on that.
Do these people still get their garbage collected? Do they just?
Absolutely. That does not, no, and.
Because they can't pull out.
Because what, well, not only that, the reason why you don't want to do it, there's a number of people who prefer not to have garbage collection and.
No, I'm not saying that. I just wanted to know whether, like, they're still getting their garbage collected.
Oh, they still get their garbage collected.
But they're not paying.
They're, and, yes. And they get billed, and if they don't pay that bill, they will be further leaned. It's very expensive not to pay your garbage. The legal fees and the lien costs are going to be more than the cost of the garbage.
Do we send them a letter for that effect?
Oh, Jordan does all the time. That's not a problem.
Could I ask a related question? Some of the names on here are also property maintenance issues.
Mm-hmm.
When things go to the magistrate, is there any way to emphasize that they're a bad actor in more than one way when you talk in terms of this?
Well, I don't know that that really has any impact on when we're taking an action for a property maintenance issue. I do think that some of these, like for instance, there's a property on here that has had multiple years where their garbage hasn't been paid. That property's up for sheriff's sale right now, and so this will be collected as part of that sheriff's sale.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just note that I can recall having some discussions in this council not too long ago, and this principal lane was 40,000, 50,000, and $60,000. And you guys have done a great job getting that down.
Yeah.
Well, I think the real estate market has.
And Paul, one lien that goes back to 2010 for road. I mean, it's, what do you, we would have collected $50 a year to be paid off.
Oh, trust me. It will be paid off at some point because that house will sell. And you know, to me, the amount of money that's outstanding is so little, it's not worth taking an action against them. The township will eventually collect it with interest when that, when that property sells.
That's weird.
Okay.
Police payroll.
Okay. Police payroll deductions.
Under Act 600, the township has the right to have the police participating through payroll deductions in funding the police pension plan. It's my recommendation that Council Doc Resolution 1121, which establishes the 5% contribution rate, that's the maximum that's provided for under Act 600. It's what this level of contribution has been for years.
So moved.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay. Sewage Council.
Ryan looks forward to be reappointed to the township.
So moved.
And Mr. Zook is the alter.
Backup. Is it, you okay with that? Really shouldn't use, Mr. Arcury should not use the term backup when talking about sewage. What? You should not use the term backup when talking about sewage. Oh, is that what that's for? So moved. Sorry about that.
Kennedy looks forward to this. Okay, move the second in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Extension of Depository Services Agreement with Washington Financial.
Yes, Washington Financial was appointed the township's depository. This relationship has worked well over the last year, and we're recommending that it be extended for another.
Move to approve the extended depository agreement with Washington Financial for another year, ending February 1, 2022.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Congrats to Mr. Jerosky for making that go as smooth as it did. Again, during the pandemic, he did a lot of work and a lot of activity to make that go very smoothly.
And I would agree with you, Mrs. Merrill. I don't think it was an easy task. It's so complicated because of the nature of our relationships and our use of electronic services. And Ryan did an incredible job making that happen.
Bravo.
Very good and certainly thank you. Next item is the approval of the minutes from the council meeting of December 21.
Move to approve.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay. Audience comments. As we continue our protocol, library as comments for non-agenda items are suspended, and comments can be emailed to Tom Gromick, and they will be read at the meeting sharing with council. Do we have comments?
We have two. The first is from Ron Books, and it reads, "Welcome to World War, Welcome to the Third World War. Two weeks ago exactly, I wrote the council in an effort to motivate township government into taking action on the question of COVID-19 virus. Today, the only response I received was from the council chair, who told me that the state has over 100-page document dealing with procedures and guidance regarding administering the COVID vaccine. I'm still waiting for a response as regard to the township's plan for action. COVID-19 is the single biggest threat to our nation's future. Make no mistake, our casualties are already approaching those we suffered in all of World War II. Take action now."
I believe that we, I know Mrs. Merrill has some comments, and I have some comments of similar nature. We'll discuss those now, or you want to?
I think maybe this is the right time in response to the comment.
Do you want to go first, or shall I?
Since you offered. My comment about that is that I did, in fact, speak to Mr. Books, and I, as Mr. Ball pointed him out, the state has a protocol for how they're going to distribute the vaccine. So I'm not sure that we can in any way really impact how that's changed or how fast we get it. But one thing that I do think he suggested, and I don't think there's a downside to it, is that if we can in some way try to figure out who to contact to make ourselves available. We have facilities that would be perfectly fine to either help with vaccinations or even testing. I mean, back in the years ago when we had polio, we all got that, many of us got that at schools. I don't think there's a downside to trying to figure out who to talk to so that we can say, "We're available to help. We're here if you need us." So in my opinion, even though we know that's not going to be coming for the public for a few months, I think we have some time to reach out and maybe try to connect.
And we have begun that process. We have contacted our state representative and our state senator to let them know that they should reach out to the Department of Health in our behalf and offer Peters Township as a site for a mass vaccination clinic. We've also reached out to the deputy director of the Conservation Department of Health to offer the same. One of the things that I do think is kind of interesting is, and again, the advantage Allegheny County has is they have a health department.
Right.
The Allegheny County Health Department has now opened up two clinics that are off hospital sites for the purposes of vaccinating people. There's no equivalent organization in Washington County, so there's no one to turn to for that. So.
Okay, I have, I have tried to reach out to our county commissioners to get their feeling and thoughts on how this would happen in Washington County. Mr. Books is correct. I did mention to him that there is a Pennsylvania Department of Health manual for health. This program should be run, it does run 100 pages or more. 60 pages is the manual itself. And then if you, if you click on the hyperlink, there's another, or known as, you know, 40, 50 pages of charts and graphs and whatever. But the essence of it is that they have the most incredibly complex protocol that you can imagine for determining who should get it, when they should get it, you know, how it's distributed, how it's equally divided to make sure all elements of population are covered. If you follow that, I don't think anybody will ever get it. But it's very elaborate. But in any case, I did talk to commissioners. They, in the county, the plan is, at least at the moment, the plan's being developed. And at the moment, they're telling me that it will be distributed through the hospitals. And presumably, that means Washington Hospital, St. Clair Hospital, and whatever.
Hey, you're changing.
Hospital. It's interesting to note that as of this moment, Washington Hospital has not received any vaccine. Hospital employees are the first ones in line to be vaccinated. Somebody made the comment that Allegheny County has vaccinated X number of people, and Washington County is only vaccinated a very small number of people. And that's because the hospital has nothing to use to vaccinate the personnel. I don't know what the situation is with St. Clair Hospital. I don't know.
Do they?
They have a lot. They thought it a lot, and that they were, they're starting to.
Okay.
And that's probably what 1,600 doses are. But, but in any case, that's apparently
the way it's going. I guess when Washington gets there, we'll see those numbers go up considerably as they, you know, as they vaccinate their own personnel. Then if you look at the state's plan, the next in line will be first responders, you know, medical crews and so forth. What I, what I'm concerned about is that the hospitals and first responders are easy pickings. You know, they're, they're in a contained area, you know, presumably, you know, everybody there is capable of, you know, giving a shot and receiving a shot. So, you know, I don't see a problem. But when you get beyond that, I don't know what they're going to do. I don't know who, at this point in time, nobody has said, you know, who their administrators are going to be with the vaccine. I've seen comments in the paper that, you know, that Giant Abel and CBS, and, you know, they're going to use them. But I haven't seen anything official about it, if anybody else has, but.
But to that point, the depart, there's a website, the Department of Health and UN Services, indicated the whole list of pharmacies the government's supposed to partner with, and there are some local. But you're right, there's not a lot of detail as to whether or not that's been finalized or how it's going to work.
But what I'm, I guess everybody's concerned is that, that with this incredibly complicated list of how it's supposed to be distributed amongst the population segments and subsegments, I don't know how you do it with that. So I agree with what Mrs. Merrill is suggesting, that all we can do is make known to, you know, the authorities, Pennsylvania Health, that, hey, we'll be happy to make available services that we have, should you need a place for large-scale inoculation, if you want to use it, you know, we're happy to do it. But, you know, I get a lot of calls and questions, and I'm sure everybody else does, you know, what are we doing, what are we doing, what are we doing? We, Peters Township, isn't doing anything. I mean, we're not the ones to administer the vaccine. That's going to come through, apparently come through the hospital system somehow.
I would point out that the, as my understanding, all of the ambulance employees at this point have been offered vaccinations. There was one round of vaccinations given to the.
Fire department.
Fire department. A second round is now scheduled.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a second round scheduled at the fire department.
So where is that to occur? In the hospital?
Yeah, they may actually, for the full-time employees, actually be coming out to the hospital, out to the fire station to do it. So, and then who, we're trying to work towards getting vaccinations is, are the people in the police department.
Right. Well, apparently it's coming out a little bit, but, you know, it's, it's very slow. I, I don't know how fast it's going to get to, you know, the general population. But, you know, as long as we're available here, ready, make our facilities available, that's most we can do right now. So.
Yeah, I'd like that. I thought, you know, as a township, we've done an excellent job providing information. We've had Chief McLaughlin here on a regular basis, bringing us up to date on our COVID response. So I don't, I'm not sure what more we could have done or should have done.
Well, again, I think the, what Mr. Ball suggests is the one thing that we can do, and that's what we're attempting to do, is to raise our hand and say, "If you need a mass inoculation site, we'll, we'll do that."
I agree. I mean, Mr. Chief has done a great job telling people what's going on. That's where we are at the moment.
Okay. The second, the second public comment we have tonight is from Mr. Dawn, and he lives at 107 Southview Court. Peters Township comments for the January 4, 2021 meeting. Happy New Year. Today's almanac may be aware of the First Energy Herbicide Spray Program the council approved along the trail. And while I see the vote has already been taken, I would like to add a few supplemental comments. As a landscape professional who held a pesticide license through the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture for over 30 years, I was required to take regular update training to keep my pesticide license current. Tree cutting and spraying near power lines has been a hot topic in many places. About 25 years ago, Mount Lebanon comes to mind. No one wants to be without power, so a reasonable balance has to be achieved. That being said, attitudes have changed. The organic food movement has swept the globe, and the attitude towards pesticides has drastically changed as well since the early 80s, when we would see dead birds after lawns were blanket sprayed by national lawn care companies. Looking through the past two council dockets, I was disappointed not to see product labels for the herbicides to be used, and found that the generic descriptions provided to council surprisingly inadequate. I would highly recommend that council request that all of the product labels and make them publicly available, since the public has a right to know without having to file a right to know with the township or First Energy. Seeing the labels would tell us what specific products they intended to use and include details like the toxicity category they, they fit into, what the specific reentry time is after applications, and other specific warnings or precautions. While 24D has passed relabeling musters at least twice, there are, there was a troubling study showing lymphoma in Kansas farmers, and in the later study, lymphoma in dogs. So if you are, if that particular selective dandelion killer is used, and, or part of a mix like Tremec, reentry time becomes even more critical. Even though non-selective herbicide glyphosate, known as Roundup, is still sold to the public, it has been banned in the UK. it has been banned in the UK and has ended up at the center of a huge US lawsuit. Will they be using this product, and what might the further implications be if they do so? Important questions on multiple levels. Finally, be fully aware of the legal requirement for notification of sensitive individuals who have been certified by a doctor in Pennsylvania and listed in the pesticide sensitivity registry that commercial applicators are required to follow them, in part by giving advance notice of spraying to any of those who live, school, or work within 300 to 500 feet of the spray area. You will have to check the current specifics. You might also want to check with the Montour Trail Group to see what their protocols have been. Thank you for your time. I look forward to seeing the MSDS for the herbicides they plan to use once council has posted them for public view. Yours truly, bumped on it.
Okay, and Doc, I don't see any problem with finding those labels and posting them.
Absolutely not.
Will you put those on the website, or will you run them on cable?
Well, I think probably where they're more accessible is on the website. We can do that.
The MSDS are pretty voluminous, but they are.
But we can publish them. We can put them up as a PDF, and you can take a look if you want to take a look, so.
Okay. Unfinished business, there is none. New business, authorize township manager to prequalify firms for the library HVAC upgrades.
And I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Jurovsky. This is his project.
So the Peters Township purchasing manual allows township... The township to prequalify firms in advance of a construction project before the bids go out. We've typically done this on projects of extremely technical nature. For example, the HVAC project in this room, two years ago, or yeah, two years ago, was done through this process. It's a way of... We, as contractors, finding contractors who have problems getting projects done on time, have experience with a specific project, that type of thing. The first step for the prequalification process is for council to establish the criteria for prequalification, put a copy of that prequalification criteria in your docket for you to review. This is pretty standard what we've done with the past two prequalifications, which were both HVAC projects in the municipal building. So if there's any questions, and after this, we will advertise and seek prequalification, and then a prequalified list of bidders will be before you at the next council meeting on the 25th.
Ryan, just one question. Do we need to advise them that the contact information might be used to check references? Or does that go without saying?
I think that it goes without... Well, actually, yeah, it goes without saying, but actually, in the first paragraph, based on your response, we maybe have to provide additional information. And I think the very fact that they're giving telephone numbers out for their references, I think, lead them to believe that we're going to contact them.
Okay, as long as we feel we're covered.
Bring in a motion to authorize the township manager to prequalify firms for the library HVAC upgrades project.
Second.
Discussion in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Correspondence? Comment on asking? Favorable bills?
Mr. Chairman, there were fewer bills than usual this period. The majority were for regular operating expenses, including two payments for about $480,000 to Libroney for work on the Rolling Hills projects. Total accounts payable was about $506,000, payroll 305. I reviewed these and move them be approved.
Second.
Discussion in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Then some other boards, anybody want to discuss any of those?
I had some questions about the planning committee, particularly the one project I had asked. I was a little confused because the project they referred to on Valley Brook Road that Mr. Robinson was doing started on talking about the medical building, and then it started talking about the cafe, and it seems like it's become one project, and I just wanted a little bit of clarification on how that was being handled.
Well, it is being looked at, not necessarily as one project, but projects that are interrelated. I will tell you, and correctly from wrong end, we're not sure now that it's a medical building that's going in on that site. There may be another use that's being proposed there, but our intention is to look at that, whatever it is, jointly so that we have shared parking that makes sense, that we have an entrance that makes sense. We're going to ask PennDOT, when they review the highway occupancy permit, to look at it in its total, so that in fact, if turning lanes are needed based upon the uses that are being proposed, that it's actually what's occurring on the entire site, so.
I had two other questions. Back in April, Mr. Burquist actually brought up a problem about flooding in that area near NSS Life, which is across from there, and I just wondered whether or not there was any follow-up. It's a state problem, apparently?
And they... Yes, they've been notified, but I don't know that there's ever been anything done.
And then the last question related to that, because these projects are being looked at together and they're talking about parking. A while back, I had sent Mr. Zook, and I think I copied you, an advertisement for the property. Apparently, Mr. Robinson is trying to find a partner to build the cafe, and it said in the text of the advertisement that it would be 1,500 square feet, but it could be made larger. I specifically asked Mr. Zook about that, since it came to council with a maximum 1,500. Can you help me out? Apparently, there's a statement that says it's potentially going to be bigger, which then would affect the parking, wouldn't it?
As part of the medical office site plan, they showed us an updated plan for the cafe to be 1,900 square. They still... Everything will all be shared parking, shared access, and they are overparking it by 20-plus spots to facilitate access to the trail.
But that's based on what? The medical building, or based on whatever of the...
The 9,200 square foot medical building plus the 1,900 square foot cafe.
And if they change the use, would the parking change?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is a rolling project, then?
It is.
It is, and one of the things that we want to make sure is that whatever it is that's being proposed for the cafe meets the requirements of the lease, and so we don't know that yet.
Right, because we aren't collecting anything until that actually becomes a profit-making thing. I just... It was a little confusing reading the minutes, and then I thought perhaps it was...
It's kind of going to be one project, I think.
Oh, it's the same owner? Or the same developer?
Correct.
Thank you for explaining.
Okay, anything else? Miscellaneous joint school board annual workshop.
I spoke to Dr. French. She's recommending, and I would tend to agree with her, that it probably makes sense to postpone the joint workshop until a date when it's safer for...
I agree with that.
...into a room, so.
All righty. Next meeting, items?
Given our conversation earlier, Mr. Chairman, I was going to ask whether we might invite Chief McLaughlin back at the end of the month to give us an update on some of the COVID situation, if there have been vaccinations, things of that nature, just to bring us up to speed, since it's been a short time since he's been back.
Well, and towards that same kind of end, I was going to ask council if we could have a workshop meeting in two weeks, so...
When's the date is?
Eighteenth.
The eighteenth, to talk about a variety of things, including funding options for the pool...
I found these results.
And the potential for an incentive plan for early retirement for some employees, and also to bring you up to date on what's happening with the schools, so.
That'll be Martin Luther King Day, if that makes any difference to me.
Yeah, it doesn't to me.
It doesn't to me.
But I don't know whether it makes to anybody else.
It's fun.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else?
I'm sorry, did you pick a time?
It's up to council, seven or 7:30, whatever works for you.
Well, since it's a holiday, let's start at seven.
I think that would be good.
Okay.
Does that work for you, Mr. Lewis?
We'll make it.
Okay.
One thing, Mr. Chairman, I do want to put on the agenda discussion, parking on Johnston Road as where I live. It's a narrow road. Seems to be a lot more cars parking on there recently. Back in when we had that snowstorm a few weeks ago, there were about six cars parked on the street, two doors down from me, right around the bend, and I witnessed almost like four accidents within a half hour because you couldn't see the cars. And I want to discuss whether or not we could potentially make Johnston Road a no-parking road.
Okay. Do you want us to... In preparation for that, do you want us to have the traffic engineer or the police department take a look at that and give us an opinion?
Yes, please.
We can do that.
You realize, of course, that won't stop them completely.
Oh, I understand that. I was just so nervous, though, because there's one house they've been building there for about two years. I don't know whether they were having a delivery or what, but right when that snowstorm came, right then, they had four white construction vehicles parked on the road in the blizzard, and about at least four times, the cars came around the bend, and you saw them hit the brakes and saw them slide off because they couldn't see these cars parked there.
That was a delivery vehicle that got stuck in the...
Ah.
It caused that track.
No.
All right, anything else? Should we go to the order? We have an executive session?
No.
Okay, then we are adjourned.